To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for tea and justice for all.
I agree. Please call the rule.
Okay, Director Raderman?
Here.
Director Cicada?
Here.
Director Thomas?
I'm here.
Director Underhill?
Here.
President Davidson?
I'm here as well. Okay, first item on the agenda is public comment. The public, at this time, the members of the public may address the board on any non-agendaized item. The public has encouraged to work through staff to place items on the agenda for board consideration. They'll actually be taking non-matters not listed on the agenda comments a number of three minutes person. Is there any public comment today?
I think Russ Thomas has a song to sing for public comment. If I'm not mistaken.
Is that?
You're on.
Okay. Well, we have to stand again. We should have done that after the pledge. All right.
What are we doing?
I'm gonna sing the National Anthem. I wanted to do that at the, at the board meeting forever, but let's all stand again.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
And, and please, sing along. We're gonna start it right here. Oh, oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight for the round parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs were seen gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Awesome. Good job, Russ.
Excellent. Okay, we're gonna move on to the board. Adoption, the street strategic plan, mission, vision, values, and goals.
Thank you. Maria, if you could please bring up the document. I want to just thank Russ. That is the best birthday present we all received today. So, thank you very much and have a happy birthday. We're glad to kick it off with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Maria, do you mind bringing up the agenda really quickly so I can take a run through it? Um, so, thank you, directors, for being at our last board workshop. This is our third board shop on the district's strategic plan, five-year strategic plan for 2026. Today, we are going to understand the strategic plan, approach, and schedule, finalize the goals, and develop prioritized objectives. And we're gonna talk about the next steps. So, just to remind everybody about the process to date, we kicked this off in October. We did a survey in November that included the board. It included staff. It also included some outside district members, stakeholders. And we've had three workshops in January, February. This is our ultimate workshop. And in April, we're gonna come back to the board to adopt the final strategic plan. The interim, we are going to ask you to vote to adopt the mission, vision, values, and goals. To remind everybody, the mission, vision, and values were developed in the first workshop finalized in workshop two. We also finalized the goals in workshop two. We made some slight changes, so you'll be able to see those today. After we vote and adopt the mission, vision, value, and goals, we're gonna take a much deeper dive. The devil's always in the details on the priority objectives. So, we're gonna spend quite a bit of time. We're going to allow three hours for that, which is a long time. We'll take a break. But hopefully, we've designed this in a way to really expedite some decision-making around the priorities. And then we'll go over next steps. With that, I'd like to turn the mic over to General Manager Michael Minkler.
Thank you, Ellen. I'm still getting over the chills from the National Anthem. Thank you, Director Thomas. That was, that was phenomenal. And I encourage you all to experience it here in the boardroom when you get a chance. That was the best system ever sounded, I think.
The acoustics are actually pretty good.
So, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us Friday morning, third and final strategic planning board workshop. Really excited about this process. I just want to acknowledge really quickly and, and thank Ed Patterson for joining us, General Manager at TUD, one of our important neighbors and partners. And hopefully, we may see a few other partners joining. And they, they may not be able to participate for the whole thing, but folks are interested in what, in, in this process and how this is playing out. And, and, you know, this is a big development for CCWD, so it has attracted some interest. And really appreciate folks joining in and, and participating if, if they want to. And also, hopefully, yeah, go ahead, Ed.
If I may, thank you for the invite. I did hear from Michael yesterday. It was tough to squeeze this in, but I, I think the T, on behalf of the TUD Board, and I'm sure of the CCWD Board, that collaboration and partnerships go without saying. And so, that, that's a primary purpose for attending this morning. And lastly, I'll say, Russell, I will tell you, you blew up my speaker from that far away. So, good job. I've heard Russ singing in person, so I know how he can hit some of those high notes, but thanks for starting out the day right.
Good to see you, Ed.
Yeah, thanks, Ed. And we, so we may, and like I said, we may have a few others jumping in and out, and I'll try to acknowledge folks as they, as they do. And, and I just want to, I also want to thank the staff and the consultants that we're working with here. This, I think, is gonna be a really productive session today where we really dive in. It's kind of, this is probably the heaviest lift of the three sessions that we've done with the board, where we really dive in, you know, we drill down below the mission, vision, values, statements, and really get into the objectives that we've put a lot of time into. And a lot of it has come, you know, we tried to capture the information that we received through the interviews that have been done and the surveys that have been done and, and the input we've received from all levels of the organization and from people outside of the organization. And, and so what we've really tried to capture all of that in, in these goals and objectives, and really looking forward to feedback from the board on this. The, we also, we did an all-hands staff meeting where we presented this information last week and didn't get a tremendous amount of feedback. But definitely wanted to make sure, since staff, staff provided a lot of input that goes into these objectives through the surveys that were done, and wanted to present this information so that they had another opportunity to review it and provide some more input. And still, you know, that's, that, that door is still open. We're, we're asking the board to adopt the new mission, vision, and values today. But the goals and objectives will come back for adoption at a future date. And so, any input that folks have, you know, we still have opportunities to incorporate, incorporate that input. So, this is, as we've discussed before, I think, a really just with the amount of transition and, and change that is occurring at CCWD, it's really kind of a unique time in CCWD's history. I think it's a perfect time for a strategic plan to map out the course for not just the next five years, but this will help set the course, you know, beyond that as well. And I think we have a really unique opportunity here to, to, to do that, to set us off on a good course. So, I'm just really, I think this is an incredibly important process, gonna be a very important document for staff to use going forward in our decision-making and in our presentations board, demonstrating consistency with the plan that we're adopting here is gonna be a big part of, of staff presentations going forward. So, this is not a, a work product that is not going to be, that is gonna sit on the shelf. This is gonna be an important part of our, our decision-making. So, I really encourage and appreciate everybody's feedback. The, the consultant team's done a great job of incorporating that feedback. I heard from one, the, one staff member who was interviewed and, and provided a survey and said he was very pleased to see pretty much all the main points that he had provided to us incorporated into one degree or another in the, in the work that's been done. And I just think that's, that's, that's reflective of the care and attention that the consultants have put into the work product that we have here. So, I'm really, really grateful for that. And so, with that, I think we're ready to get going. I see that Larry McKinney from Amador Water Agency has just joined us. So, I want to acknowledge Larry and thank, thank you for joining us this morning, Larry. We're just getting started, although you just missed a phenomenal rendition of the National Anthem from Director Thomas. But I'm sure that as, as a veteran, you would appreciate that, and, and maybe next time, we'll make sure, make sure we catch that for you, or we'll send you the recording.
It, it was all pre-recorded, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. So, with that, I'll turn it over to, back to Ellen or John?
Uh, Michael.
It's Ellen. So, yeah, John can't be with us here today, but thank you, Michael. And I do want to thank both Ed and Larry. And if I miss anyone, I think it shows tremendous support for the district that you've had a lot of input from your adjacent neighbors. And I just want to commend you for that because our watersheds, as you know, don't stay within sometimes our county boundaries, or even some of the initiatives that we want to take, take a larger partnership, particularly as we go after funding, as we look at water resiliency and also fire management. So, I just want to thank Ed and Larry for taking their time to be a part of the district's process. And we do look forward to hearing from both of you. So, please, everyone should raise their hand. We are going to allow the board to comment first, but any comments that can help us make this a better, more adaptive but resilient plan, the better for the district. So, thank you. Um, with that, I'd like, Maria, if you don't mind, we, I have one correction, Michael. We are going to vote today on the mission, vision, value, and goals. We want to make sure that we have the overarching goals correct. And then you will vote at the next board meeting on the plan that will include really the objectives. And as I already mentioned, this is where the real heavy lifting is. I want to invite the board. When we're evaluating these objectives, you may not agree with every objective, but I want you to think about as we weigh in, if it's something that isn't going to detract from the district. And I hope that at the end of this process, I can tell you, my heart was singing, Russ, maybe not as melodically as your voice. But when I heard that staff could already see themselves in this plan, that to me was a victory with a big win, because I want everyone to see that there's something in this plan for them that's going to help speak to their constituents or to their role and responsibility of delivering on the district's highest priorities. So, we want to make sure everybody can see themselves in this. So, with that, um, we're going to read through the mission, vision, values, and goals. And then we're gonna ask Rebecca to do a, we'll ask if there's any further comments or consideration for edit, but we'd like to vote on this one piece of paper here, which is the mission, vision, values, and goals. So, with that, Maria, did you want to read them? Do you want me to? Your voice is better than mine, and we could just prove that if we sing another song.
Okay, sounds, sounds fine. I'll, I'll read them for us so we can have some little breaks in between. Um, so, we formatted here all of the mission, vision, values, and goals on one page. We're gonna go through. I'll read them so that people on the phone can hear them, and then Rebecca will take a roll call for the vote. So, the mission statement, as Ellen said, we began with this one, the vision and the values. And our mission statement has been refined to now read, protect, enhance, and develop Calaveras County's water resources and watersheds to provide safe, reliable, and cost-effective services to our communities.
Yeah, maybe we'll pause right there and just ask, um, is there any feedback on the mission statement that's not already stated within the statement before we go forward? Hands from the board?
I have nothing to add.
I think it's, uh, just as we refined it, it sounds great to me.
Okay, with no additions, go ahead.
Good with it. Thank, thank you. I'm good with it.
Okay, with no additional comments, go ahead, Maria.
Okay, and then next, we move on to the vision statement, which is how we see ourselves moving forward. And that is to be a trusted leader, to collaborate with our valued partners, and provide healthy, innovative, and resilient water resource solutions.
If there's any comments on the vision statement, this would be the time to make them. Okay, go ahead, Maria.
Okay, and now our values, we have in two formats. The first format is this bulleted list, which will be good for materials and outreach and for listing the individual statements. And after that, I will also read a combined value statement that may be used as an alternative in other materials. So, first, here's our list of values. We seek to create a positive customer experience. We are transparent in our relationships. Communication is the foundation upon which we build. We are mindful stewards of our assets and resources. Inclusive teamwork is fundamental to our success. We operate with integrity. We value the health, well-being, and safety of our employees and their dedicated contributions. And we adapt to changing conditions by assessing risk and seizing opportunity.
Any comments on the bulleted list of values?
I like it.
Thank you, Maria, if you'd like to go to the statement.
And a more concise version of the values, we came up with this statement together. We strive to build trust by forming transparent relationships, creating positive customer experiences, being mindful stewards of our assets and resources, and operating with teamwork and integrity.
I like it. That sounds good.
Yeah, it all sounds great.
But that would be instead of the bullet points?
It's in addition to the bullet points, yes.
Say that again?
In addition. So, we have two alternatives, so they can be used if you need a smaller concise statement. Or if you like the list form, I think they can be used in different formats for different purposes. So, we've got both of them.
Okay, if there's no further comment, these are the goals. So, today, we'll be voting on the goals, not the objectives, but the goals will be as stated as follows. And then the objectives today, you'll have your opportunity to make edits and develop new objectives if we omitted any. Go ahead, Maria.
Okay, so the goals here are the buckets in which we will place our objectives. These are the overarching goals. Goal A, fiscal responsibility. Prioritize investments based on risk and benefit to our communities and fulfill the district's services commitments. Goal B, programs, projects, and initiatives. Implement programs, projects, and initiatives to ensure water reliability for the prosperity and well-being of our residents, businesses, and watershed. Goal C, operational integrity. Ensure district operations deliver efficient and reliable water and wastewater services. Goal D, customer experience. Build trust and demonstrate value to customers with responsive service and positive experiences. Goal E, people and partnerships. Engage our stakeholders and partners to best protect our water resources and infrastructure and further our shared interests. Goal F, enduring organization. Ensure reliable and consistent services through building an evolving organization that reflects the district's values. And just a note about the lettering of the goals, the goals have been lettered for purposes of discussion and assigning objectives to goals, but these goals are not presented in any priority order.
Thank you, Maria. Are there any questions, comments, additions to the goals?
I, I understand completely that there's no priority indicated here, but in both the vision statement and in the values, we, we stress that the positive customer experience and, and gonna be a trusted leader. So, I, I would, would make a strong recommendation that we move those goals that are related to building trust and the customer relations to goal A, or something near the top, that we demonstrate to our, our customers that everything that follows is intended to achieve that primary goal of making a transparent organization, one that can be trusted and communicates well, well with its customers.
Thank you. And we have no problem when we develop the format of the actual strategic plan, we can make sure that that is prioritized in the first position, so it's the beginning of the goal section. So, we can make that note, but that shouldn't at this time on, as for the matter of the vote, have any bearing, but we will move it up in the design of the strategic plan. So, thank you for that input.
Yeah, and just to, just to clarify, and I realize I didn't have my camera on before, so y'all can see my mask. The, I, I think because we are asking the board, I think the next thing we will be doing is asking the board for a motion to adopt these statements. So, I just want to clarify that we would be moving goal D, customer experience, to goal A, and then I guess just push everything else down. And that, again, is not reflective of priority, but I like the synergy there between the first value statement and having that as the, as goal A.
Well, I think, I think that's the point. Everybody seems to be eager to agree with me, but I'm only one board member. Maybe other people think it should go further down the list, but.
I agree with you, Russ. I fully support that.
And I'm also in agreement with you, Russ.
That's, that's three of them.
All right, so we'll take that note for the final document. And, and, and that's the way it'll appear.
I, I support you as well, Russ, but only because it's your birthday.
I just had a minor question. I, you know, of course, addressed all the goals, but I'm looking at the draft objectives and where and when will we be discussing that part of it?
That's the, that's the rest of the morning.
Pardon?
That's the whole rest of the morning.
Okay, well.
But that'll be, once we adopt these, or that, once the board adopts these, the rest of the morning.
Okay, so we're, we're doing the cover right now is what we're doing.
Well, the mission, mission statement, the vision statement, and all of the values, and these goals are items that we really honed over the last two workshops.
Right.
And so, I think this is, it, it sounds like what, what, what we're hearing from the board is this, this, this captures what the work that we did before. In the board for adoption of these items. And then the rest of the workshop today, we will spend on the objectives.
Well, if no one has any changes to this, I'll go ahead and move for a, a motion to accept the, the mission, vision, values, and goals as, as stated here in front of us today.
I'll second that. Take your pick.
Well, B comes before C. That's fine for that.
Okay. Rebecca, do you want to move to a roll call?
Is Jeff on mute?
Let's see.
Talk to us, Jeff.
I don't see Jeff unless he's the call-in number.
Yeah, he is.
He is.
He is. So, he's on mute. Let me take him off mute if I can. Let me see if I can. I can't take, so Jeff, you need to hit star six on your phone to take yourself off of mute. There you go.
No. All right, I'm here now, I guess.
We can hear you now, Director.
I was enthusiastically supporting everybody's comments.
Great.
Okay, President Davidson, we have a motion and a second to accept the strategic plan, mission, vision, values, and goals. I'm gonna call them.
How about a little public comment? Hold on. I believe we need to ask a public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, well then, go ahead.
Okay. Director Raderman?
Yes.
Director Cicada?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Underhill?
Yes.
President Davidson?
Yes.
Guess we can go home now.
So, what's, what's, what's next here?
Okay, well, thank you. It looks like we have a unanimous vote. This is wonderful. This is a testament to you all collaboratively working together, um, not only to develop and create, but also to confirm that the board is moving in unison with the overarching mission, vision, values, and goals, which is really the heart of the strategic plan. Now, we're going to move in to do some more heavy lifting on the objectives. So, the staff, as well as the consultants, worked hard to capture the surveys, the interviews, as well as the last two workshops, when people were bringing up ideas that we decided didn't really go up to the goal level, but fit nicely under one of the goals that you just adopted, we created an objective around it. So, we asked you to review those objectives, and there's three things that we're going to focus on today. And that's going to be, are there any objectives missing? Are there any objectives that should just be completely eliminated because you don't feel that's something the district should focus on? Or are there any objectives that need to be modified? And we're really gonna ask you around the modification, what in the objective is not resonating with you? Is there the tone of the objective? Is there, is there something that's just not aligning? And we are not going to spend time today, because we only have three hours, and there's a lot of material here, wordsmithing. You can imagine what it would take to wordsmith, unless there's a recommendation that you made while reviewing the objectives, and you have your edits there. We are really not gonna spend our time on wordsmithing. Rather, do we have the tone of the objective correct? Does anything need to be added to it or eliminated or toned down? So, again, the three things that we'll be doing as we go through these goals and objectives. Are there any objectives missing? Are there any objectives that just should absolutely be eliminated, and why? And then, are there any objectives that you'd like to see modified to make it resonate more with the goals of the district? So, with that, Maria, if we'd like to. So with that, Maria, if we'd like to go ahead and work on goal A. And again, we'll move, we'll move around, move up the customer satisfaction goal to the top, but we're just going to go with what was sent out. So under fiscal responsibility, this goal is to prioritize investments based on risk and benefits to our communities and fulfill the district's service commitments. I'm going to go ahead and read rather quickly each of the objectives, and then I'm going to ask you those three questions, and we can do a roll call. So each of the directors have an opportunity to comment, and then we can also ask the public, but we're going to go goal by goal, so we can try to move this. This is three hours, and we are going to take a break today. So if I forget, remind me. We'll get to take a break after maybe the second goal. So under fiscal responsibility, we have a strategic objective. One, develop and commit to a long-term financial strategy and framework to fund the projects identified in the CIP and other long-term district obligations and needs. Two, create alternative funding and financing through grants and partnerships to execute our CIP for short, mid, and long-term investments. Three, develop and align annual budgets with prioritized projects and CIP that can be implemented based on value-added and benefit to district customers. Four, develop best management practices for budget forecasts and tracking and base decisions on data-driven outcomes that define and reflect value and cost effectiveness. Five, review financial budget systems and tools and update if needed. Six, commit to responsible financial decisions during our day-to-day operations. Seven, maintain our legislative obligation to not change, charge more, and not charge less than it costs to provide reliable services. And finally, eight, communicate the district's fiscal obligations and accountability to our customers through transparency and effective public outreach. I want to draw to everyone's attention that the last objective of every goal, we tried to underscore communication, because every single one of these goals, in order to be successful, will take a commitment to communication. So while we have communication and partnership as part of our overarching goals, we wanted to make sure we had an objective that spoke to that specifically. So with that, I'd like to start, and I'm just going to go off of our agenda, asking each director to answer one of the three following questions. Do we miss any objectives under this goal? Do we need to consider adding any objectives? Do we need to modify any of the objectives? So with that, I'd like to open it up to Director Raderman to make comments on the objectives under goal A.
Ellen, I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Director Cicada?
Yes, I have regarding number seven. I don't, it doesn't fit well with me where it says, you know, obligation to charge, not charge more and not charge less. Is there something else we could say to get to the same, you know, what you're trying to say? It just, it doesn't hit right with me, but it's not a deal breaker, put it that way.
If I could comment on that, Cindy, I had a problem with seven as well. I would rather see obligation changed to mandate, because it's far more, it's written into law in that 218 process that we have to charge what it costs us to provide. So it's not an obligation, although it could be considered an obligation, but to me, it's a mandate, which is a stronger word.
You know, and maybe it could be just something like maintain our legislative mandate to regarding cost to provide reliable service. I don't know. I just don't like that there. It seems wishy-washy or something.
And just to remind the board, the reason we have this is really trying to get to that fiscal responsibility. And I also believe we were looking at some of the affordability, which is a politically charged word, so we don't try to use that word. So we were really trying to get to the essence of what is our fiscal responsibility around cost for reliable services.
Might I make a comment, please?
Absolutely.
We've always, when we come through our rate hearings, we always emphasize the fact that we are looking at how much it costs us to provide service. So the cost of service is one that is not, you know, really emphasized, and that is our key. What does it cost us to provide adequate service?
Michael, what does it actually say in the legislation? I've gone to a number of rate, public rate hearings, and it's always explained to the people that are there saying, and why does it cost so much, and why do you have to raise our rates? And it's always explained, well, we have to, we, it's required by law that we cannot charge less than it actually costs us.
Well, it's, I think the language that is often cited is in reference to charging the cost of delivery. And it usually comes up in the context of a challenge for charging too much, and a property owner, a customer, just using the cost of service to that property. And so that's the tough work that happens in a rate study is determining what the cost of service to the property.
We could modify this to say, maintain our legislative mandate to charge the appropriate cost of service to provide reliable services.
That's a better, better solution.
Yeah.
Maria, did you get that?
Yeah, so maintain our legislative mandate to charge the appropriate. Maybe we use the word fee, yeah, fee, fees, to provide reliable services.
Perfect. I'm better with that.
Great.
Nice.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'd like to see if Director Underhill has any other comments?
No, I'm good, other than, you know, inclusion of cost of service. That's fine.
Thank you. Director Thomas?
Looking at two that says, well, first of all, in one, it's, we're talking about develop and commit to long-term financial strategies. And then number two says create alternative funding. It seems like that that needs an introductory phrase about, you know, in addition to the above, create alternative funding. Because it, I don't know, it almost implies that we could always fund our projects with alternative funding opportunities like grants and partnerships, which of course is not, not the case. It's very infrequently that we could do that.
Sure, we could say as part of our financial strategy.
Okay.
Comma, create alternative funding.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it. Oh, sorry, Ellen, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
I think that's a good way to put it, because I think, you know, when we're doing our, our long-term financial planning, we're not counting on grants or other alternative sources of revenue necessarily, unless we have some assurance that it's certain, but we're always pursuing those. It's, I think, Alan, we're trying to strike there.
And I just want to remind everybody, when we're looking at a financial strategy, lots of times, like the infrastructure package coming out of our nation's capital, we've known that's coming for a long time, when it's coming, what the details are. But, you know, we're helping our agency clients to start preparing and pre-positioning for that funding long in advance. So I think this is a very astute objective to put into your plan. Any other comments? Director Thomas?
That's all for me.
Director Davidson?
No, I have nothing, Dad.
Thank you. So at this point, it sounds like the board, this would be the time to comment on any of the objectives for goal A. While we are not taking a formal vote right now, I would like to ask the board, is there any reason you think we could not go forward with a vote at the next board meeting on the objectives as listed under goal A?
I'm comfortable with that.
I'd be willing to vote on it next time.
I'm good with it as well.
It looks good to me, unless I change my mind.
I hope you're not just saying that because it's Russ's birthday. I mean, it's, yeah.
If Russ sings next time, I'll vote for it then, too.
Oh, yes, I was. I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to ask Russ if he could create a song around our value statement, because that could be really fun.
I'll go to work on it immediately.
I could see a collaboration between Damon and Russ on that, some singer-songwriting.
Don't forget.
I do that.
And Richard Hibbert, yeah. We have, we have some musical talent in the organization, let's just put it that way.
Our union president is a songwriter and a good one.
So as you guys remember, I'm still singing those jingles back from the 1970s, so putting it to music works. Okay, thank you, Maria. I think we can go on to goal B.
Great.
So Maria, you want to read this one?
Sure. Goal B, programs, projects, and initiatives. Implement programs, projects, and initiatives to ensure water reliability for the prosperity and well-being of our residents, businesses, and watershed. So we have a number of objectives here. The first one, leverage hydropower projects to benefit the near and long-term priorities for the district and its stakeholders. And hydropower was an objective that received a lot of comments, so there are some sub-bullets underneath hydropower, and those are, A, ensure hydropower resources, protect water supply reliability, and provide revenue for operations. B, determine funding mechanisms to support FERC relicensing. C, negotiate with project partners to increase financial benefit from North Fork and New Hogan hydroelectric projects in the next license term. D, continue to utilize and build the Water Resources Fund and FERC Relicensing Fund to protect water rights and pre-position for FERC relicensing. So that's it for the hydropower, and now we'll move on to these other objectives. Objective two.
Maria, if you don't mind, I'd like to just make a quick comment on that one. And the comment is, we, we put some work and some thought into how to capture this in the objectives, because a lot of these objectives here, with respect to the hydropower projects, could have, you could have, you could have had a mention of the hydropower projects in each of the goals. And I think the concern we had was that that might overstate, or it might create a perception of overstating the focus on that rather than a focus on, on water and wastewater operations. And we know, obviously, and we received a lot of input on the importance of the hydropower projects. And so we're not trying to diminish that in any sense, but we, we thought it was better to try to capture all of the objectives, objectives that are related to the hydropower projects in one, in one place, rather than have it spread throughout the six different goals. And we thought the programs, projects, and initiatives goal was the right place to do that, because it really is. You know, we are taking a programmatic approach to these objectives that are, that are laid out here. So that's why you see some of these will overlap with, with the finance goal or an operations goal or enduring organization goal. But we thought it was better to consolidate all of the hydropower objectives into this one, one area, and you probably won't see it come up in any of the other, any of the other goals, even though they would overlap with those areas. So that's the explanation for why we did it this way, but happy to receive board feedback on that.
Thank you for that explanation. That's very well put. There was a lot of hydropower all over the place, and it's much easier to process here altogether. So I'll quickly run, well, not quickly, there are quite a number. I'll run through these other objectives. Projects was a popular goal. So our second objective, comply with the state-mandated Sustainable Groundwater Management Act as part of the district's integrated water reliability and resilience commitment. And there is a specific goal for that, which is, A, update governance structure for groundwater sustainability planning. So over time, you may develop more of these specific objectives underneath a broader overarching objective. Objective three, evaluate feasibility of and implement plan to secure new water storage. Objective, yes?
Excuse me, I had a question on that. That's a, that's a whole big subject, new water storage. And how we can capture that is going to be our big, our big, you know, part of this goal. Can we maybe put it more finite?
Yeah, that's a, it's a great question, and this is one we, we talked a lot about, too. And, and I think at one point, we, I think we specifically mentioned the effort to secure storage in New Maloney's. But there are other efforts or other potential opportunities that we, so we felt like, in the end, the objective, we didn't want to call out any single specific to secure storage. It was broader to, we want to identify any opportunities where additional storage would be appropriate and feasible, and where there's opportunities to take advantage of that. And I think the New Maloney's effort is the biggest one, but we don't want to, we didn't want to ignore, you know, whether there might be a groundwater transfer possibility somewhere and some storage opportunities or, you know, other, other components of that initiative. So that was why we left it pretty, pretty broad, the way that it's stated, but it is very broad.
Michael, you just, well, go ahead.
Okay, you used one word, but I think what we're saying is we want to maximize the use of our water.
I'm sorry, where does it say maximize? Are we still talking for number three?
Yeah.
It says evaluate feasibility and implement plan to secure new water storage.
Well, okay, all right, I follow you, all right.
Um, thank you. Scott?
The, it seems, it seems like, you just, in your, in your comments, Mike, you just mentioned the word transfer, but I didn't see it on this page, and as a.
Yeah, we were, we were pretty careful to, not that we're, you know, that's, that's not part of the, the potential opportunities, especially where there's, you know, as we're, as we're moving forward into Sigma implementation. But we also want to be careful that, you know, how we, how we frame that, and that the effort around water storage really has to do with water supply reliability and resiliency. And so we didn't want to, you know, we didn't want to use that.
So, but if I'm understanding, Director Adam, are you making a suggestion, maybe we need to consider a new objective that deals with transfer?
No, I think it's part of a program, project, and initiative, and it is a future goal, even if it's not stated. It certainly would be a, I mean, it'd fit into financial, too. It'd be, you know, possible new, new, which is something I think everyone on this board is, is aware of, is if we can get new, new funding, new, new money coming from somewhere besides rates, it would sure, it would sure ease, ease the financial burden on, on everybody and every ratepayer. But it is, it is, I mean, it is a great goal to have, and I don't know how to put it in here without.
Oh, did we lose everybody? No, there we go.
No, I, so what I would recommend, Maria, can you make a comment box and say, consider transfer as part of the financial fiscal responsibility? That's probably where it would go, and we'd have some more discussion. fiscal responsibility? That's probably where it would go and we'd have some more discussion around that. Is there, are there any other directors interested in adding an objective under one of the goals regarding transfers?
No.
I don't.
Is, do I have an opportunity to go back to the Sigma discussion?
Yeah, and we, we're going to go through just as we did before. I was hoping Maria could read through all these just so we can understand what's in there. But if, we can do that now if you like, go to that. And I also know that Brad has his hand up to make a comment as well. So Brad, before we go back to Sigma, do you want to make your comment?
Yeah, thanks, Ellen. And I think this is a, a really good discussion on the bullet point related to storage. One thought that came to mind when Michael mentioned groundwater was that I, I would want to maybe add the term conjunctive use in there somewhere, something along new water storage and conjunctive use opportunities. Because that's the sort of the nod to groundwater recharge and, and things that way that we can utilize our position in the sub-basin to work with others to recharge and beneficially use our groundwater resources. Specific to the transfer discussion though, Michael's right that we gave a lot of thought into wanting to avoid the term trans, transfers because it's a real hot and button topic. But Director Raderman's point is a good one that we do see that as a long-term option for revenue sources. And so that being said, if we are at all going to reference or use the term transfers in here, I would make sure to include the term transfers and exchanges. I found that at the state level, when you make a nod or at least, you know, acknowledge that it's transfers and exchanges, you can usually get further and people drop their guard a little bit. Not sure entirely why, but I've found that to be the case.
I just want to emphasize too, that our, our, our main objective, when we talk about developing additional storage is, is water supply and reliability and resiliency. And I, I think we should, we should deliberately tie the storage initiative to those, to those, to those angles. And that's what we, that's what we tried to do here.
So Michael, are you suggesting we add a plan to secure new water storage for water supply and reliability to the end?
I would be in favor of that and just leave it at that. Secure new water storage for water supply reliability and resiliency.
Okay, great. And before we move up to the Sigma, I just want to understand better. Do we want to have more discussion around the transfer and exchanges? I heard some directors saying that's not a priority for them. But I'd like to ask the question a little differently. Would the directors who said it's not a priority, would you oppose having it in your strategic plan as a consideration? I believe Director Davidson, you were not interested in, in having transfers. Would you be opposed to including an objective about transfers and exchanges?
I would be. I don't know why, why you would have that impression. But yeah, I would, I would be in favor of including that.
Oh, you would be in favor. Maybe I misunderstood.
I think they misunderstood the, the question, Ellen. Both Russ and Jeff responded positively, but I think it was the way the question was posed.
Okay, okay. So maybe if we could just scroll up to fiscal responsibility, or maybe it's under programs, projects and initiatives. If we could just add an objective, Maria, that says, you already have it here, but I put add or consider water transfers and exchanges as part of the district's portfolio.
As a whole new objective?
As a whole new objective. So consider water transfers and exchanges as part of.
And, and sorry to just jump in Ellen, this is Brad again, but I, I would maybe caveat that with some nod to as allowed by our permitted water rights or some sort of caveat in there that acknowledges that there are transfer guidelines and, and things that may constrain our ability to transfer, but we will do our best to explore and consider those opportunities.
Well, I think actually the caveat I think I would like to see is just as a part of our, as a part of a water, integrated water management strategy. And I, yeah, so I think trying to again tie this to water supply.
And Michael, I think a few years ago, we put together a, a water transfer, like Billerite, you know, how we, how we would, how we would do it. And got a lot of positive support from the environmental community on, on how we were, on how it was going to be done. I don't know if we've abandoned that document or, or we're, we're looking at changing it, but we did put some time in, into that, geez, like five years ago.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's been abandoned. Actually, it might be something, let's go back, maybe, maybe Ellen will go back and look at that and, and see if it, it makes sense to reference it. And put some thought into how we want to characterize this objective.
Yeah. And I just wanted to ask, is, is there any reason we may not want to include this objective? And I should say that your strategic plan does not need to be exhaustive, meaning you don't need every single objective to be stated in your strategic plan in order to do it. That's the beauty of having a flexible document that you get to revisit annually on how you're going to operationalize your objectives. So if there are any reasons that you may not want to state it here, it doesn't mean you, you can't pursue that in the future. It just means it's not your highest priority that's going to be outward facing.
And I was thinking, I'd like to see it in there because we are getting so specific on so many other exact projects that we're working on. You know, folk, the FERC relicensing and, and other, other projects related to, anyway, it, I, I like, I'm glad that it's in here in some, in some fashion. And thanks, Brad, for your, your, your comments on, and one of the things that he did say is about conjunct, conjunctive use. Is that something that can be thrown in that sentence with, with the word water transfers?
Actually, I think we were going to include it underwater supply, right, Brad? Number three, for new water storage, I mean?
Yeah, that, that would kind of go hand in hand with the idea of water storage.
You could just put a parentheses, example, conjunctive use.
Yeah. And, and then looking at number four, I, I like the way that that's coming together. I would just change it where it says, as allowed by our permitted water rights, consistent with the district's integrated water management strategy, something like that.
Right. Okay. And we can still wordsmith as long, I just want to let the board know if we go back, we may wordsmith some of these objectives that would not change the tone or the meaning, but if we find a better word, we may use that. And we can draw that to your attention before you vote on it at the next board meeting, but we want that to stick. Okay. I'd like to move up now to number two for Director Thomas to talk about the Sigma.
Well, Brad, you're still on, right?
Yeah.
This, the Sigma Act only applies to, kind of only 1% of our area of the county. And I'm, I'm just fearful that if this document is going to be produced and distributed, that all 13,000 of our water customers may feel like, maybe I'm misstating that, people that are not on our water service that are on groundwater wells. Even though that they're way outside of the sub-basin, they may conclude that there's some kind of control that we're trying to put upon. So how, how do we put in a kind of a disclaimer in, in this discussion that, that the Sigma rulings only apply to 1,000 acres out of 39,000.
That's a very good point, Russ.
That is. I have a, I have a comment on that as well.
Okay. I, first I just want to see, I believe you directed your comment to Brad, correct? Director Thomas, would you like him to respond to that?
Before he does, can I make a quick comment? That might be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I, on that where it says comply, I made a note that because we are, have such a small area there, maybe we should say, to say something like, continue to participate in the SGMA instead of comply with, just in case there's something that we may or may not want to comply. Does that make sense?
Clarification here just for one second because it might answer both of those. This is not obligating us to do less or more comply to state mandated, to a state mandate. That's why we purposefully started the sentence that way. It's not obligating you to invest or act, but you do have to do it a basic minimum, comply with the state mandate. And that's a regulatory driven action. So any other comments on that? And Brad, if you can provide clarification, that would be helpful too.
But that's, oh, if it's mandated, if that particular SGMA plan, the members are mandated. If we weren't, if we decided to not be a member from, for some reason, would we not be mandated by that?
Well, that, that's exactly, that's exactly where I was going Cindy and I, and I, yeah, for that, that's kind of, is kind of confusing why, why it's in here with those, with us complying. You know, the, the water district and the state mandated is not necessarily mandating the district, it's mandating somebody. But there's other members of that, of that partnership that may, and I'm not quite sure how, how much longer we're going to be, we're going to be involved in that than to have that here as a five-year goal. Is that what we want to do?
So this is a really interesting discussion and, and I don't want to hijack it with getting into the, the depths of Sigma. But I can certainly envision a scenario where if CCWD were to exit the Eastside GSA, we would still need to comply with certain aspects of Sigma and the GSP, considering that we use groundwater in a portion of the sub-basin, namely the Wallace area. It is possible that the GSA moving forward without us could impose certain sustainability objectives, lockout, or I don't want to use lockouts, but that is a potential. Things that they could impose on our service area to try and achieve the broader sub-basin sustainability objectives. And so whether or not we decide to participate, you know, we could certainly help define those, those guidelines and what those, that potential future looks like. But in one way or the other, we are going to have to comply to Director Thomas's point in, in our area of the sub-basin. Whether it be on the GSA and we're helping to formulate the, what the compliance with sustainability looks like, or whether we are subject to the sustainability objective set forth by the GSA without us. And so to, to kind of address both of those, I'm, I'm tempted to reform this number two point to just make it broader groundwater management. Sort of make it a broader groundwater management objective, nodding to the fact that we do have a lot of private groundwater users in the county who are not overlying the sub-basin. But we'll still work with them to the extent feasible to try and make sure that they're, you know, behaving in a generally sustainable manner. And then maybe drop the Sigma specific speak into a sub-bullet that acknowledges Sigma applies to our portion in the sub-basin that is being managed under Sigma. Hopefully that makes sense.
I, I think that's a really good suggestion, Brad. So I think that maybe the so maybe the primary objective here is, you know, responsible use of groundwater resources and evaluating opportunities for conjunctive use. And without, without mentioning Sigma in the, in the primary objective, and then a sub-objective could be evaluate or something along the line of, you know, continue to evaluate our engagement in the Eastside San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And updating the governance structure for that GSA.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful modification.
Sounds good.
And just to point out that the governance of the Eastside GSA is certainly one component that the board and, and will be, you know, considering in the future. But regardless of whether we move forward with the GSA as a participant or not, we will, in our areas overlying the sub-basin, still need to comply with the GSA and with Sigma. And so there's sort of the two components. And I, I'm open to thoughts on how we sort of acknowledge both of those.
Sorry, I guess we got cut off. I was talking that whole time.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Michael. And then after Michael, we'll have Larry McKinney contribute.
Did you catch anything that I was saying or did it just get cut off?
We did. We got some of your edits, but you should feel free because I'm not sure where you cut off.
Okay. I was, I was just starting to tell the story back in November. I was just, I, I think Brad had a good suggestion of an overarching objective that focuses on responsible groundwater management. And then under that continuing, as Director Raderman mentioned, continuing to evaluate our engagement in the GSA and, and updating the governance structure of the GSA.
I, I, I kind of get the feeling that we were way off in the bushes on what I was trying to achieve here. I, I just want to make sure that we don't alarm our people in the, in the county that are not affected by Sigma, that they somehow will be affected. If they're, if they're not over in the, in that, the area of the county that overlies the sub-basin, they don't have to worry about it. So.
And we should probably put some language as it relates to groundwater users in X part of the county. And again, we want to make sure, this is a perfect example of where a strategic plan is going to have something in it, we hope for all the constituents that are related to the district. And some things may not apply at all, but it doesn't necessarily make it competing with other priorities.
Yeah. And I think just real quick, and then I, I really want to get to Larry's comment. I think that was part of what we tried, I think we would achieve or, or hope to achieve by taking Sigma out of that, over the, the primary objective. Because there are other areas in county where we have conjunctive use in place already, and up in Evans Pass is one example. And other areas where we might be developing that outside of the critically overdrafted basin. But I think the objective would be responsible management of groundwater resources countywide. And then maybe a sub-objective that talks about the GSA and the, and the sub-basin.
Thank you. And I'm really curious to hear what Larry has to say because he has lived groundwater for a long time. Go ahead, Larry.
Thanks. And this is a topic that is going to be coming up very quickly for the Amador Board as a discussion. We're very similarly situated with regard to the GSA down at our western end. And I, I don't know exactly whether it's a bullet or a sub-bullet, but I was going to suggest that language that might work would be to continue to participate in groundwater management efforts to protect the district's interests. Because that could be progressive or defensive, either way. But the point is, you know, this is what I'm telling my board is that we need to be at the table, but we don't want to overcommit. So, you know, I just thought that language might be helpful. And I'm test driving it here to see if you like it, then I can take it to my board.
Sounds good to me, Larry. That, that's an excellent comment.
Yeah, I was just going to jump in.
I was just going to say that I do agree with Larry's comment that, that is a good way of, of presenting it to, thanks. Sorry, Brad.
No, no, sorry for, for jumping over you there. I, I was just going to echo what you're all saying that I think that's a great sub-bullet point. I would be tempted to take that one, remove A and D, and then adjust C to say comply with state mandated Sigma for areas overlying the eastern San Joaquin sub-basin and just leave it with that B and C then.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. And Maria, you're doing a fantastic job. I'm so glad it's Maria driving. I, I've had to do it and it's not as easy as Maria is making it look. So, um, thank you. Any other comments on objective number two? And I just want to congratulate all of you. This is exactly the kind of input that we want to make this an adaptive plan as well as a relevant plan. So thank you. With that, Maria, if we want to move on with you, you reading the rest. With that, Maria, if we want to move on with you reading the rest of the objectives, I know this is a long but very important goal because it really is the heartbeat of the district programs, projects, and initiatives.
Okay, that sounds good, Ellen. I was wondering, do we maybe want to do this in chunks? Because now there are 12 objectives here and we did one through four. Maybe we should do five through eight now?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so Objective Five here, protect, develop, and extend the district's water rights to ensure countywide water reliability. And there were a number of sub objectives underneath that. A, investigate potential beneficial uses for reserved rights on the McCombey River. B, expand water deliveries by bringing the slurry line into service. C, work with partners in the agricultural community to ensure their water needs are met. D, develop a comprehensive watershed plan for White Pines Lake and San Antonio Creek. E, extend potable water service to understand and I'm sorry, let me start that one over. Extend potable water service to underserved and underrepresented areas. So that's all underwater rights. And then Objective Six, Seven, and Eight, Six, protect our watersheds to adapt to climate change, promote healthy forests for wildfire protection and water yield, protect water quality, and ensure sustainability. Seven, pursue sustainable water supply projects such as recycled water. And Eight, develop a comprehensive energy strategy to generate revenue and decrease cost of operations. So I'm hoping maybe we can do this chunk here from five to eight, and then we'll move down to the last little chunk of objectives nine through 12.
So any comments?
I, I have a comment on item number five, and that's where we're ensuring sustainability. And that's a big, big subject. And, you know, do we need to add something else in there or?
I think that's a good point. We could add ensure countywide water reliability and resilience at the end, and resilience often contains sustainability in it. It's, it's been a trend, I would say, for the last maybe two years that we're looking at a resilient basin that goes beyond just the three elements of sustainability, but includes sustainability. Would that meet your objective?
That would, that would, you know, not make it sound so encompassing. Yeah, that would, that would work for me.
Okay, any other comments? And I'm not going to call on you individually, but again, we're looking for any additions, eliminations, or modifications.
Yeah, hi, this is Brad again. Just wanted to point out that reliability in this context was a nod, I believe, to the fact that in the upcoming urban water management plan, we are going to be defining a working definition of long-term water supply reliability as part of the new Water Shortage Contingency Plan components. And so given that we are going to be defining that through other channels, it may satisfy some of the concerns. I just wanted to point that out. But that being said, I'm not opposed to including terms like resiliency or sustainability. But we may want to consider what that means and how we define those terms, maybe outside of this document.
Well, I think you bring up a good point. And one thing that we like to do in our strategic plans, I've only had to do it once in 30 years, but we kind of like to keep, long as it's not a politicized word like affordability recently having to put definitions in, that would be a word we could have used pretty innocuously in the past, but once it takes on a different type of tone, then we want to steer away. If you feel, Brad, that reliability can be looked more in the generic sense here and not in a defined sense, that is what I would recommend. And the same word for resilience.
I don't want to take away from Director Underhill's concern with that. I just wanted to point out that I think in this context, reliability is a, a term that needs to be unpacked and I, and will encompass some of those concerns. And there are other efforts we are doing currently to try and unpack that term in the district's context that'll come out later.
So are you making any suggestion that we need to change something as it's currently written?
My, my whole point is I think water reliability by itself was fine, but I, I don't want to take away that if, if reading it doesn't encompass what other, other folks, if, if it, if the need is or the feeling is rather that we should include the other terms, then I don't want to take away from that. I just wanted to point out that sort of there is a lot embedded in that term reliability already. Perhaps at this point, it's fine to just continue and keep both these here and we can address that later on.
Okay, yeah, particularly I think Brad, since we don't have that definition for the district at this point, is I think it's okay to add that as just more description if it's not detracting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, any other comments on these four objectives, five through eight?
No comments from me.
I'm good.
Okay, Larry McKinney.
Thanks. On the water rights group of sub bullets, there's a concept that I don't think is really raised, and I don't know if the board would think that it's a priority, but I think we have kind of a family of, of organizations up here in the, in the headwaters and foothills with water rights that, that we might be able to work collaboratively to make sure that we're protecting each other. And I mean, just as an example, the State Board is talking about whether to revisit how water rights work in light of climate change. I think that's something that we ought to all be working on together. And there might be some, some good business opportunities to collaborate. So that idea of collaborating with other water rights holders in the watershed is, I didn't see it in the list. And I'm just suggesting it might be important.
Larry, I'm really glad you brought up that, brought that up because recently working with El Dorado Water Agency as well on their strategic plan, it is something unique to the foothills that a lot of your authorities that were bestowed upon you were all bestowed around the same year through your authorities and the Water Act. So it is something for consideration. So I'm really glad you brought that to the attention. Are there any comments on the recommendation that Larry's offered?
I, I think it's a great suggestion. I'm glad you pointed it out. It, it brings to mind that, you know, when SB 47, was it 474 or 7474 came up two years ago? You know, it was immediately a, a joint effort among Mountain Counties Agencies to oppose, you know, what was seen as an attack on, on our water rights that affected, it would have affected a lot of us. So I think there's a really key, a key role there for collaboration. And, and I think we should, we should capture it here. So I'm glad you pointed that out, Larry.
So instead of watersheds, you could say something Maria to the headwaters, right? That's what you all have in common? We're collaborating with other water right holders in the headwaters or near the headwaters? Brad, do you have any recommendations?
I'm not sure about the headwaters term. I think as far as working collaborative collaboratively with other rights holders
Just protect our collective interest, I think, and delete.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't include watershed either because they may be in different watersheds.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Larry, did you have any other comments? Your hands up. That's why I'm asking.
No, I just failed to put it down.
Okay, thanks. Ed?
Regarding the headwaters term, just wanted to point out that there is an Aqua group called the Headwaters Group. It may be worthwhile to use the term, but there is a definition with the Aqua Headwaters Group that's actively working in the state to bring resources into the headwaters.
Yeah, it's, it's taken a lot of traction. And Larry was actually on the Aqua Board when the headwaters issue came to a head, no pun intended. So we will work a little bit more maybe on that sentence, but in the spirit of time, I think we have the concept here. Director Raderman?
Yeah, I just wanted, when we, we talk about water rights and then we get into very, very specific things below, below it. I mean, five seems to be about water rights, but I think we're, if we're going to talk about the McCombey, we're going to talk about the slurry line, we're going to get into White Pines Lake, San Antonio Creek. There's other water rights that we're not pointing out that might be more important and even, and why we, I don't know, not quite sure why we dove so deep into mentioning all these, these others. And then we're, by doing so, we're specifically ignoring, you know, water rights on the Stanislaw, for example. It's not mentioned.
That's a good point.
Well, it's, it's a great point, Director Raderman. And this is another one where some of this could have been, could have fit under different goals where we, so we tried to consolidate these discussions. And we, we kind of, we went back and forth on, on including any level of specificity at the, because the risk you run is, you know, it may, you may create the perception that something else is not a priority or that we're not working on many other water rights issues that we have that aren't listed here. And so, you know, I think it could, I think we, we thought we would include these as specific objectives that, you know, we, we didn't want to ignore that because we know they're a priority and we know, you know, there's initiatives or efforts underway. And so we, we felt like we didn't want to ignore those. But at the same time, you're absolutely right that, that we're, it doesn't mean that we're not pursuing other, you know, other, other avenues of, of water rights issues. So I'd be fine with either way, you know, if the board's preferences, we don't want to get into this level of detail at the risk of, of de-emphasizing something else. Then we could take out the sub points. Or I, I do think in any event, I would, I would still want to include something about collaborating with agencies that share a common interest. So I think we could still include an objective on those, on that front, even if we took out some.
Michael, I also want to add that there were, there were details included here like White Pines and San Antonio because it was feedback that came directly out of interviews as well as surveys. So again, we want to make sure that the voices were heard since we did a broad survey.
My, my point wasn't necessary to, to remove the bullet points, Michael. And maybe just add there in E, other, you know, that, just say something that where there, there are other, other water rights that we hold, we held on other bodies and other, and just to include, to include all of our water rights, just some line to say, and, and other water rights as, and, and other water rights we hold on other, on, within the watershed, something like that.
Maybe we could move that to the actual goal where it says protect, develop, and extend the district's water rights and maybe identify how broad they are there. So that's overarching, that it's a holistic approach to our water rights strategy.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to suggest. I think we tried to capture that in the, in the primary objective, but maybe saying something along the lines of, you know, including but not limited to these, these specific efforts that are listed below.
Or such, or such as White Pines Lake because it's not, you know, that encompassing. You know, it is, it is an integral part, but it's not that large.
It's, it's actually our smallest service area.
See, that's, you know, that's why.
It would, yeah, so I, I think it's a good point. So let's work on the, we don't have to wordsmith it here, but we can go back and work on a way to capture that, you know, this is not the, the all inclusive list of, of water rights issues that we're working on.
Yeah, as I say, you could say such as White Pines Park and endless others, but, you know, change the thesis down.
We can do that on D. Thank you. Brad, your comment, and then we're going to move on.
Sure. I, I think Director Raderman's point is a really good one. I can look at each of those bullet points and think of ways that you'd want to expand them to encompass, you know, the three watersheds, McCombey, Kelders, and Stanislaw that we rely on. I think a lot of that can be done in the header. I would be open to the idea of removing some of those bullet points or refining those. And then I just wanted to point out for F that I would avoid the term neighboring and just keep it as other water rights holders because I think to a point that was raised, there are Aqua Committees, other events happening in Sacramento where we may join that would have water rights holders from many other parts of the state that aren't neighboring, but may share our collective interest for things like state filed rights, et cetera.
Yeah, I totally agree. There's a lot of partnerships.
Yeah, and I wouldn't want to necessarily exclude, you know, we, we may be on the, we may be have, and we certainly do have in some cases, shared interest with East Bay Mud or, or Southern California Agency. And I wouldn't want to, you know, diminish that by limiting it to the headwaters or Mountain Counties Agencies. So I think we can come up with some language there that, that is more inclusive, but really captures the, the importance of collaborating on those efforts.
Thank you, Michael, because my dog drinks fresh McCombey water every morning and we would like to thank all of you for that. And she knows where her water comes from.
I, I was skiing on your, your water supply just last weekend.
Okay, great. So Maria, if we can move on to Objective Nine.
Ellen, it looks like we have one more hand raised.
Oh, I don't see it. Thank you.
It's Ed Pattinson. Patterson, sorry.
Sorry, I, I lowered it. I may not have lowered it in time.
Oh, yeah, I don't see it.
I had a comment on the previous section, but I can reserve till later or mention it now.
Mention it now, please.
I'm sorry if I missed the opportunity. We jumped through the first four pretty quick, but that had to deal with hydropower. And I just wanted to mention that it, you know, hydropower is a very expensive, heavy regulated resource area. And I don't know if it belongs under this particular objective or the previous with regard to financial fiscal responsibility. But there's a lot of seasonal hydropower revenue, year to year hydropower revenue, various regulatory compliance measures and inspections through DSOD and FERC Part 12 and so on. And one of the objectives TD is looking at, and, and I think we've already implemented is contingency and reserve funding, because with those type of large initiatives, if you don't have contingency in reserve funds, you just can't deal with the, the variables cash flow. And so.
D, I mean, B, one B adding on to that, Ed?
Well, I don't know. I'm just suggesting into your fiscal responsibility. And I think even here, you mentioned a fund for exploring the FERC licensing and, and I don't know where New Hogan is at currently in terms of ownership. But I just wanted to point out that as we're, you know, we're working on acquiring some PG&E assets, including hydropower, one of our key terms that we're really focusing on, because the variability of cash flow on large expensive projects is having sufficient contingency and reserve funding to be able to navigate the, the highs and lows of, of those kinds. You know, you basically save when you are making money and put it aside in contingency and reserve funds so that you can survive, fiscally survive during drought and low periods or large capital expenditures.
So do we want to add an E maybe here that says something like consider contingent, consider impacts of funding and financing?
So I appreciate that comment, Ed. And you're right, the, the, the revenue is highly variable. And it varies from one project to the next, too. Some are more, some are more reliable and some are extremely variable depending on the watershed that they're in and the, the regulatory, you know, the FERC license compliance requirements. In this case, I think what we were trying to capture, because we don't currently exercise that level of control over the budget for those projects. And we were trying to really capture positioning the district for the FERC licensing process that we're about to embark on. And, and the structure, the ownership and, and the partnerships, the structure of those partnerships and how that benefits the district and the county. And so we, we do have and how that benefits the district and the county. And so we, we do have some financing, some references to financing mechanisms under this objective that we, I think initially they were under Goal A, but again, we, for this objective, we tried to consolidate all of the hydropower objectives under, under Goal B, even though they, they definitely cross over into those other areas.
So do you feel, Michael, that we've addressed those funding irregularities, I guess, for lack of better terminology, and what we have? Or do we need to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely understand and appreciate the point. I just, as far as where, how those projects are managed right now, the, the funding variability doesn't affect CCWD as much as the, as, as much as it might go into going into the next license term.
So it's just something to consider in the negotiation?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I guess my point, and I understand, and, and those are good comments, Michael, but when you do embark on a FERC relicensor, even saving money for it in your potentially competing, FERC as a regulatory body will be looking at your technical managerial and financial capacity, what we call a TMF, to be able to manage and operate a, a large hydro project regulated by FERC. And they're going to be looking at reserve funds and contingency funds. You know, because we talked about the variability of the cash flow, part of it is also the variability of expenses. And when you get an, an expense on a hydropower project dealing with dams and tunnels and, and, you know, turbines, you're counting in sometimes seven digits or more. And you're going to have to have quite a large reserve or contingency fund to be able to absorb those kind of blows. And it's going to take time to get there. That's why I pointed it out.
Thank you. B says determine funding mechanisms to support FERC relicensing short and long-term processes. Maybe just to kind of note that it's more than just the actual negotiation, it's the kind of life cycle. And we don't necessarily have to add that, but it might capture it more.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So I want to try to get through nine through 12, I believe, and then we are going to take a 10-minute break. You guys have been really committed. We appreciate that. So go ahead with number eight, Maria, or is it nine?
No one really commented on eight, I don't think, but we'll take that. If there are additional comments with eight, we'll do it with these. Objective nine, continue to implement water conservation initiatives such as leak detection and infrastructure replacement. Objective 10, maintain up-to-date district policies. Objective 11, offer low-income payment assistance. And objective 12, educate and engage our communities about the district's commitment to healthy watersheds and forests.
Any comments to add, eliminate, or modify?
On number, on number nine, water conservation, I, I think, when you hear, see the first part of that sentence, I think a lot of people think water conservation is, you know, turning the water off while you're showering, putting a bucket in there to water your plants. I mean, and then, and then the second part of the sentence takes away, takes away from that thought process. And I'm not quite sure if that's what the intent, what the intent was. I mean, if we're, because when you're asking for water conservation, we're taking away from income for the, for the district. We're asking people to use less water when we don't have any reason to ever do that here in our district. We're water, water-rich. We have a lot of water that flows through this county that we don't use and, and in each, in each of the three watersheds that we, that we take water from. But is that what we're purposely trying to do is to avoid asking customers to use less water or where we're going to conserve water other elsewhere? Is, is there a reason it reads this way?
Thank you. I'm sure Brad, hopefully you're going to respond to that.
It sounded like Michael wanted to, so perhaps.
Well, I was just going to say, it's a good point. And there's sort of the two different components to water conservation. And there's that, the side of it that we can control, which is we tried, what we tried to emphasize here as examples, you know, such as leak detection and infrastructure replacement. But there's also the, you know, customer outreach and communication. There's a rebate program that we have. There's, you know, the effort, the drought action plan that we have to implement when we do have conservation mandates. So maybe it would be, you know, maybe, maybe we should mention implementation.
Just the word out, just that word outreach, customer outreach is, I think would hit it.
I think that's right. I think that's worth mentioning here that, you know, because those are a part of our water conservation initiatives. We have our own, you know, leak detection and infrastructure replacement, but I, I think we should add outreach, something along the lines of customer outreach as well. I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, did you want to add to that?
I, I think. You hit kind of what I was going to say on there. Just to answer Director Raderman's question, yes, there, there is consideration for water conservation, including things like outreach, leak detection, infrastructure replacement. And the only other thought I would add to this is a lot of these conservation initiatives kind of collapse under the idea of demand management measures or water shortage actions. There's, there's that terminology being thrown around from the state. And so if we could at all pull that in here, I would be interested to, because I think it would actually kind of include a lot of what we're talking about here.
Excuse me, I'd like to make a comment because if I'm thinking of this or reading it as a water customer and I'm reading water conservation initiatives such as leak detection, that just seems so overblown. It's just not what I would think of when I think of initiative.
I guess what it's responding to as well is best management practices, overall for the district. And we want to make sure that our customers recognize that we're taking, you know, we're taking precaution and preventative measures.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, that's a good point. And when we, we can wordsmith this afterwards and, and make sure that we're, we're, you know, we're drawing that distinction between customer outreach initiatives and the district's own water conservation initiatives.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other comments on the objectives for, I think we're on Goal B?
I just want to raise a general comment that I, I'm not sure if we touched on before, and if we did, I apologize if I'm restating it, but you'll see in the objectives document words that are bolded. And, and I really appreciate that Ellen and Maria took the time to do that because those, but I don't know if we explained the significance of that to the board. And those are terms that came up in the surveys and came up in the interviews. And so they made sure to highlight for us terms that were, were important and raised repeatedly through that process and, and show that we're capturing those things. So the input from all levels of the organization and everybody that has provided input can see where, where that information came from and it's, and it's highlighted here. So I just, I think that's, I, I just really appreciate that you guys did that because it, it helps, I think, demonstrate to everybody that we've taken all that input very seriously and, and made a really, it's been a huge part of the effort here to incorporate everybody.
Thank you. If there's no other comments on Goal B, I'd like to make the recommendation that we take a 10-minute break and try to come back at 10:22, if that works for everyone. I'd like to ask you to turn your cameras off and mute, and then when you come back to turn your cameras back on so we know that you're back. Thank you. I think we're all starting to come back. If you could please turn on your cameras if you're back so we know you're back. And if you're calling from a mic only, if you could just let us know you're back so we can test that your mic is also working.
This is Cindy. I'm back.
Great, thank you. Director Davidson, are you back?
I don't see Director Davidson's phone number on here.
Okay, I wasn't sure who's phone number. I thought that was his, so that must be Cindy's. Okay, I wasn't sure who's phone number. I thought that was his, so that must be Cindy's.
I'm logged in online. I don't know if that matters with my phone number or not. You might just see.
No, I see you. I see you.
Okay.
Any of those that are at the district's offices, they may have had a bathroom line. There's another fine example from working from home, no line. Sorry, Director Sakata, how do you think things are going so far?
I think they're going great. I like the idea, though, what we did first. We should read every one of the goals, you know, like we're going on Goal C, read all the one through seven, and then you ask each director their comments. I think it moves along quicker, less interruptions.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, and I want to make sure I get everybody out on time since we only have an hour and a half left. And I always love to get the board out earlier if we can, because four hours, three and a half hours is a long time.
Yeah, I agree. But I think if you should, when we come back to the meeting, you might want to say, let's go for that format because
Sure.
I liked it. I don't know of anybody else.
I also like the discussion we're having, though, so I don't want to detract from that in any way, because it just enrichens. I mean, the plan gets better. You can see why this input is so critical.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's been a really, I enjoy the workshops. I think it's been really helpful, and I like what the results are. Everybody seems to be doing a really good job.
Great. So it looks like we have, whoops, in the boardroom, it looks like we have Director Thomas and Underhill back. Do we have Director Davidson back? And Ratterman, Scott, are you back?
I'm here, Ellen. I don't see Jeff's phone number on the list anymore.
Yeah, I hesitate to start without Jeff back online. So maybe we can make, wait, is Michael back?
Michael's here.
I'm back. I'll check with Jeff right now.
Okay, terrific. And for all the others, we are going to go back to the way we were doing it before. I'm going to read Goal C and the entire objectives, and then we're going to do it more roll call style, only because I want to get you out all on time. And we still have several goals with Goal F being rather long, so I want to manage our time while getting this important conversation in. The programs, projects, and initiatives, and this next one, I think, will generate some discussion, because again, this is really mostly what the district is doing day in and day out, and deserves that level of discussion.
How's the size on this? Is it readable? Should it go bigger?
I can see it fine.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay.
At my elevated age, I can't see it at all. Just kidding.
Thank you, Maria. That's much better. I'm telling you, my eyesight just during this lockdown has gone bad. I think it's just from sitting at a screen 10 hours a day, which I never did before. I'm looking forward to getting back to real life here.
Aren't we all?
Yeah, I think I'm going to need stronger glasses.
Yeah.
Larger monitors help with that.
Yeah, that's true. Except I moved rooms quite a bit. I can't, I mean, for me to be sitting at all is quite different from my experience. So I can't sit in a room very long.
So hopefully President Davidson will be joining us again here momentarily, but I think we should probably go ahead and get started. We still have quite a bit of ground to cover.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read through these. Goal C, operational integrity. Ensure district operations deliver efficient and reliable water and wastewater services. Goal one, ensure our infrastructure is operated and maintained to fully realize their expected lifespan. Two, implement preventative, predictive, and corrective maintenance plans to ensure safe and reliable operations, including continue to modernize wastewater treatment and recycle water delivery systems to increase the use of recycled water, which decreases demand for raw water. B, develop a short, mid, and long-term approach to project implementation that aligns with value added, optimizes the budget, and is paced for successful outcomes. Three, develop standard operating procedures and improve technology that will create efficiencies, reduce risk and cost, and ensure consistency throughout the district. Four, rehabilitate or replace aging infrastructure to increase reliability, capacity, and efficiencies. Five, develop a health and safety program and promote health and safety in all that the district does to protect our community and proactively manage our risk. Six, monitor and adapt to emerging and existing regulatory requirements and mandates. Seven, communicate on the district's operational efforts to effectively deliver water and wastewater services. So again, and I believe Director Davidson has joined us, is that true?
Yep.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. We just went through Goal C and the objectives, so we are going to do roll call style in the respect for our limited time left. So I'm going to go ahead and start with Director Ratterman. Is there anything here that should be eliminated, added, or modified?
I don't have any comments right now.
Okay, terrific.
They're my time to when something pops in my head, I'll speak up.
Sure, thank you. Director Sakata.
The only comment I want to make, and I'm sure all staff is going to be aware, because I always talk about expenses, but on number three, develop the standard operating procedures and whatnot, but when it gets to, you know, create efficiencies, reduce risks and costs, I'd just like to see the emphasis on reducing costs, you know, creating the efficiencies, reducing costs. I just want to make sure that everybody's mindful about, you know, I've said it before, spending other people's money. And whether it's here or back in the financial side, I just, it stood out to me when cost was last in that reason for these operating procedures. I'd like to see that as a priority, but I would still be okay with the way this was written. I just wanted to make that comment. And everything else I'm okay with.
That's good, and that's one of the reasons we were sensitive to that, and that's one of the reasons that we said we'll create efficiencies, because by creating efficiencies, that usually has a cost implication. And of course, managing risk preventatively usually saves money, so we wanted to be very mindful of that. But I think just putting maybe where the word cost shows up in the sentence, if that's helpful, that's an easy fix. Would that meet some of your concerns?
I'm good with it, yeah. Make that change, I'm good. Reduce costs and risks. So that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Ratterman?
Yeah, I just was curious as to why consistency in that sentence is highlighted, that that particular word. It seems like there's a lot of efficiencies, risks, costs. And I'm glad to see risks are in there. That's a huge insurance avoidance is one of the best ways to ensure loss. But consistency, this doesn't seem like it should be bolded. What?
Thank you, and I want to remind everyone that the bolding that's within these sentences was only to indicate that this came out of an interview or survey. So that's why it's in here. Somebody specifically mentioned it. They will not be bolded in the strategic plan moving forward, but this was just to indicate, so why did staff and the consultants even put this in here? We wanted to alert you that it's in here because this came from our discussions or workshops or survey. It won't be bolded in the final copy. So consistency is not any particular special word, except that it came out of our stakeholders' input.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Underhill?
Oh, yes, and talking about the highlighting, it was important enough for our staff to mention it so that, you know, it would come to our attention. And so I think that's important that you did that. But no, I'm fine with Goal C.
Thank you. Director Thomas?
I like everything that I see here with Cindy's suggested change. It's good.
Thank you. Director Davidson?
Yeah, no, I'm content with Goal C.
Thank you. Any input from staff or the public? Yes, Damon?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to touch upon the consistency conversation. I think overall staff recognize that there's perhaps many ways of doing things throughout the district culturally. And I think a lot of folks acknowledge that if we can standardize most of what we do, it'll meet that objective. And I think, because I hear a lot of conversation about consistency in the day-to-day ops of facilities as well. And I think it also highlights that the district works to implement infrastructure that is uniform also. And so I think it kind of mirrors that objective as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that input, Damon. Any other comments? Does the board feel like the way that the objectives are stated under Goal C, that they would be able to vote on this in the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, it's fine with.
Yep.
Yes, looks good.
Great. I'm not hearing any no's, so we're going to go ahead and move on to Goal D. Do you want to read through these? Maria, or would you like me to?
Sure. Goal D is customer experience. And we did discuss earlier moving it up higher to one of the earlier goals, so we'll be doing that in the final document. Customer experience. Build trust and demonstrate value to customers with responsive service and positive experiences. Our objectives are: Objective one, engage customers and educate on district's achievements through local venues and outreach. Objective two, implement strategies to get customer input, such as customer surveys, to inquire about experiences, obtain feedback, understand priorities, and learn preferred communication modes. Objective three, connect with our county residents and businesses by engaging with them regularly at local events, press releases, news stations, and communications that highlight how the district is serving them. Objective four, provide services that are accessible and cost-effective to customers, including the district's website to transact business. Objective five, instill a district-wide culture that fosters positive customer experiences. Objective six, improve communications with customers through the following. A, seeking to understand the customer point of view. B, prioritizing responsiveness to phone calls and electronic inquiries. C, enhancing access and response times through technology, especially as related to emergency situations.
Great, thank you, Maria. Any comments from Director Ratterman on Goal D objectives? Are we missing anything? Do we need to eliminate or modify?
Looks good.
Thank you. Director Sakata?
Well, of course, I have a comment. Let's see. So I'm thinking possibly moving number two up to the first spot, and then move everything down. And just because I think getting strategies to get customer input, I know it's extremely important to me. And then the other comment on number four, whenever I see anything, you know, provide services that are accessible and cost-effective, every time I see a website or something more digital-related that requires internet, I think of my district, because it tends to be an area that doesn't have good internet, just because of the location. And I'm wondering if this is a possibility, something to consider. Maybe it doesn't have to be in our objectives here. But set up some kind of a CCWD subscription for the administrative staff in certain areas, and I'm thinking West Point, one, it could potentially lessen all the service call, or all the calls for admin. They could make payments there, you know, maybe even if it's only once a week. But that might help and lessen some of the calls if some of these folks can come in person and make the payments. And maybe you have something like that already, I don't know. But when I see, you know, the website to transact business, not everyone can use the website because of internet. And then on number six, C, again, I see enhancing access and response time through technology. So again, is there, you know, some other way to enhance it, not just some type of digital technology?
Okay, so thank you. Let's maybe start, if you could scroll up. Maria, I'd like to hear a little bit, maybe two, not to put Jessica on the spot. But if you have any response to this, I know that part of it's technology-related, and that meets some customers' needs, but not others, particularly if there are technology barriers. So are there other ways to transact business that would be in-person, such as paying bills? And I don't know, Jessica, if that's your area of expertise, so anyone can feel free to comment on how we might change this.
Yeah, well, currently, our doors are open, so customers can absolutely come in, and they can pay bills in person, they can pay bills over the phone, they can pay bills online.
So maybe it says, provide services that are accessible and cost-effective to customers, including use of district's website, telephone, and in-person ability. So you're providing, you're providing different modes of being able to access transactions through the district. So maybe we're just showing that we have a range of opportunity. This both technology-driven as well as in-person. Would that be helpful, Cindy, to making this more appealing?
Yeah, I'd like to see it like that, if you can.
Okay, because that's being able to go to every type of demographic, people who are more remote, people who are closer to the district, et cetera. So with that addition, if we want to move on to the next one that Cindy recommended?
And I have one more, well, I have a question. So you highlighted, you know, the, like, websites highlighted, because in the survey, we had that request. Were there any customers that responded to our survey, or was it just in-house and board members?
Yeah, this was not sent out to the public, and we've, I personally have never experienced sending a survey out to the public for the strategic plan. Our access to the public is the invitations and showing up to the board meetings, which is put on your website. So we did not do a customer survey. And I think there was some survey discussion, right, above, and maybe Jessica wants to address that just in the future, through customer surveys and our ability to get that input in the future.
Right. I just wanted to make sure I understood it with the, with the bolding there, so thank you.
Yeah, the bolding was, again, it was definitely staff. We had over 30 staff that participated. It was the full board interviews and surveys, as well as we had over a half a dozen external to the district that responded, as well as others like your union representation, county representation, some former employees to the district. All participated in interviews. representation, some former employees to the district, all participated in interviews or surveys. And it was really great to get that different perspective, so we could look back in the history of the district, as well as looking at projecting forward. So it was really good to have that granular, you know, that granular approach to different perspectives.
And then on C, where I had saw the word technology again, after reading the whole sentence, I'm okay with that there. I don't, I don't need any change or any more comment on that on C.
Okay. Thank you. Director Raderman?
Oh, yeah, just one, one quick comment on, on number five. It seems like under the goal of customer experience, that number five, after Cindy moved one of them, one of the other ones up, that surely seems to be, to be the top one. And I wanted to ask my fellow board members if they agreed, under the goal of customer experience.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. And we hear that a lot, Scott, and I think great that you move it.
And we also underscored it in the overarching Goal D. You can see the sentence ends with, to customers with responsive service and positive experiences. So that is something that there was a lot of consistency in our responses back. So thank you for that recommendation. Director Underhill?
Oh, yes. No, I'm satisfied with the changes. I'd just like to talk about 6A. Improve communications with customers through the following. Seek to understand the customer point of view. I, you know, I can say I understand, but am I going to do anything about trying to please you? Or, you know, that is just kind of a, doesn't give me much satisfaction.
Really? So seeking to understand the customer point of view to improve district service.
That, that would, just adding that would be, yeah.
That sounds great.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Great, thank you, Director Underhill. Director Thomas?
Okay. I am totally in agreement with moving number five up to number one, but there's going to require some little wordsmithing there because there's a lot of redundancy. If you have stated the same sequence of words in the Goal D, customer experience, and then you, and then you follow with the number one thing, foster positive customer experiences. Anyway, but Maria can figure out how to, how to do that. But I would suggest that five go to, go to one with, with some wordsmithing. Six should be two. And then I think Cindy wanted to move number two to one, but then I think that number two should go immediately after, after six, and then these other things following.
So you're saying elevate improved communications, because hopefully for improving communications, everything gets better, right? The customer experience, everything else will follow. So is there anyone who objects to moving number six up front? Again, we want to try to get away from making these hierarchical in any way, but I can understand why you want to emphasize. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I like it.
I think he wanted three. You could think he wanted with three right now, up to two, though.
Are you okay with that, Director Sakata?
Yes, I'm fine with that. Sounds great, everything Russ said.
And I just want to make the distinction for number one. One of the reasons that we repeated the positive experience, and maybe this isn't coming out enough, it says instill a district-wide culture. This is really beyond just whoever's answering the phone or right in front of the customer at the time that they have a recommendation or complaint, however you want to characterize it. It's really to get, whether you're in the office, in the field, anytime you're wearing that district logo on your shirt or your truck, you have a certain personification of who the district is through our culture. So that's why we created number one. It's more than just providing a customer experience in our words. It's really trying to install it in our DNA of our employees, if that makes sense. That's what we were trying to underscore.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Director Davidson, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm happy with the changes that the other directors have made.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from staff or the public on Goal D? Thank you. Moving on to the next goal. Goal E, people and partnerships. I personally, this is my favorite, because I've never used this as a goal in anyone's strategic plan like this. And I think it was really fun that this came to our attention. And again, that was all because of interviews and the survey. People and partnerships. Engage our stakeholders and partners to best protect our water resources and infrastructure and further our shared interest. Objective 1. Develop and execute a communication plan that supports the district's outreach to internal and external partners and reflect our shared values and mission. 2. Engage and facilitate partnerships to best utilize the district's assets and promote the district's legislative positions. 3. Create a recognizable presence in the county through thought leadership and rebranding. 4. Continue to develop relationships with local, regional, state, and federal partners to manage our district's risk and leverage our assets. 5. Closely monitor and engage in any relevant policy developments. 6. Partner with other organizations and water agencies on grant opportunities and policy advocacy. 7. Increase district recognition and expand partnerships engagement through community events and outreach opportunities. So with that, I would like to go through the roll call method again. Director Raderman, anything you would like to eliminate, add, or modify?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you, Director Sakata?
I'm with Scott, not yet. It looks good right now.
Thank you. Director Underhill?
Okay. Please remind me how we're going to get through thought leadership?
Okay, thought leadership is number three. Create a recognizable presence in the county through thought leadership and rebranding. So we like this presence of thought leadership, and thought leadership is really speaking to, we need to be at the right organizations, we need to be at the table, irrespective of who those stakeholders are, anything that would be relevant to the water district. And we need to be leading in those discussions that are relevant, that help protect our water assets, essentially. So we put that term thought leadership in there, just to denote that we don't really want to be passive. We want to be the thought leaders and to inspire others to deal with anything that is of interest to the district in terms of our services, our assets, or our risks. So I don't know if I answered your question, Director Underhill, but that was the thought behind it.
Yeah, I was thinking, have I, you know, missed a new way of doing leadership entitled thought leadership? That's what I was thinking.
Well, you've done it for years.
Oh, have you?
Well, you have.
Okay, well, you know, but I'm saying that, to make it, you know, current. I have another couple of things on number five. Closely monitor and engage in any relevant policy developments. And who are we talking about specifically? And number six, partner with other organizations and water agencies on grant opportunities and policy advocacy. And it sounds like when you say partner, we will just, will continue to partner. We've been doing that, so that, why don't we just say continue to partner?
Perfect. So let's add to number six, continue to partner. On five, closely monitor, engage in any relevant policy developments. I believe your question is like, what policy developments? We put relevant here to qualify that a bit. Obviously, we're going to be looking at policies that are relevant to the district. Some of it, for example, might be fire policy that normally wouldn't, but do have water implications, right, to a healthy watershed, as well as being able to do water or firefighting, rather. So is there something you'd like to see, Director Underhill, that would be added to this to make, to clarify this more?
And just to add to that response, I think we initially had a much longer sentence there, where we were talking about state and federal, you know, legislative and regulatory policy advocacy, and it just got very kind of convoluted, I think, or it was hard to be concise when you, when you reference all those different areas where we're engaged. So I think we ended up trying to streamline that into relevant policy developments, regardless of the source. And it may be, you know, a county ordinance, or it may be a federal, you know, legislative effort.
Could we add to that, say, relevant policy development that affects CCWD?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we were trying to capture with the word relevant, because we do, I think that is one of the areas, and we've discussed this quite a bit in our advocacy, you know, wanting to be engaged in areas where there's an impact on the district, but not wanting to go beyond, you know, what is, what is directly relevant to us with our limited resources for that type of an effort. So I think that's why we were, that's the qualifier there was relevant policy development, so we could clarify that further.
Relevant to CCWD.
Great, thank you. For that, any other comments, Director Underhill?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Director Thomas?
I don't have anything to add, but I like what I'm hearing here from my colleagues. So.
Thank you. Director Davidson?
Nope, we're all good.
Thank you. Any comments from staff or the public?
Yeah, this is Scott. I want to, I want to try and understand number seven a little bit better. What, what do we, what do we, what are we trying to get there?
Sure. So this came up too. I'm surprised we don't have anything bolded on here, but a couple of things came up with this when we wrote this. Increasing the district recognition. If you recall, there, there was some discussions about our logo on the trucks. There was discussion about how we're perceived in the community. And we thought a good way in increasing the district's presence and being more connected to the community is to show up and, and show up at these community events, wherever that might be, like with the Chamber of Commerce. There could be other areas, and I know that you're already attending those. But we wanted to be able to increase our district's recognition and also really live our brand. Brand's not just your logo on the side of the truck door, right? It's those interactions and exchanges and engagement that we actually have with your community. So I know that this is something that Jessica is also looking at, of how we're going to expand our outreach opportunities and our partnerships, where they make sense. So Jessica, I didn't know if you had anything else to add to this?
No, I think, I think you said it well. I think, you know, one big thing that's important to me is that we, we are part of our community. I mean, you know, obviously, we engage with our community because we have, you know, thirteen thousand customers, but I think it's important that we, we make it a priority to, to, to be, show up and be at these events, or whatever it may be, but to just increase our engagement with our local community members.
So like the farm, if you have farmer's markets, or you have, you know, the fair, things that where you have more of a presence than them just getting their water bill in the mail, that's not, that's not, you know, the only thing that we represent in the community. We want them to see us as working on their behalf.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I do agree with that a hundred percent. I was hoping what I was, hoping what it was, what it was about, and that'd be great to see more, more of. One last comment on number three. The word rebranding, it, it sounds, is that obligating us to change our logo, for example? I mean, and I know, Ellen, you just commented that rebranding doesn't necessarily mean, mean that, but it certainly sounds, three certainly sounds like that.
We did hear that in the surveys, that there is some interest in rebranding. I mean, people got pretty graphical even about the presence that we have with our current brand. And it's not uncommon during a strategic planning process that we want to hold on to a lot of the great parts of our culture and tradition, but we also want to be projecting that the next five years isn't going to be exactly like the last five years. So it's not uncommon for districts to rebrand in that next five-year period. I don't think it obligates you that you have to change your logo, but it is saying that the district doesn't want to be perceived by today's standards tomorrow, because we did hear, to be frank, some critical, I think, feedback about the district's presence. And it's something that everyone felt collectively, we'd like to see improved throughout the county and through our partners. So that's why we chose to include that, because even if it's not through the imagery brand, which is not a bad alternative, it's got to be more than just the cosmetic part of modernizing the district.
And just to add on to that real quick, I agree, it doesn't obligate, oh, hold on, are we, can you guys hear us?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. My computer just froze, but as long as you can hear me. It doesn't obligate us to do anything, but I think it recognizes sort of a, I think there's kind of a groundswell of, of support for a change in, in image, including the, the visual image. And I think part of that is because of the fact, not just that this, you know, that we hope to be moving in new directions, but capturing the fact that there's already been a pretty radical transformation of the district over the last few years in, in really remarkable ways. And demonstrating that with our aesthetic, I think, is, is important and captures the change that has taken place at the same time, you know, not, as Ellen mentioned, respecting and acknowledging our, our history. So I, I don't, it doesn't obligate us to do anything, but I think, I think, I think there's a fair amount of support for moving in that direction.
Can I add on? I think it's an important comment about obligation to the strategic plan. Hopefully, the strategic plan, the will is being represented here to execute and implement it, but things are going to come up. You have a chance every board meeting, but you definitely have a chance every year where you're going to operationalize the strategic plan. You're going to hold yourselves accountable by what you fund, what you don't fund, what your will is of the board in terms of executing on the objectives in the strategic plan. The strategic plan was meant to capture that goodwill moving forward, help direct staff what's a priority from the board's perspective, but also noting that this is a dynamic strategic plan. Like in the time of COVID, I can tell you, at least my former clients, they have to recalibrate what they're doing in their strategic plan to meet new obligations, new regulatory requirements. They have to constantly be nimble. And this plan is meant to keep you nimble by saying, well, we said one through seven was a priority. We're clearly not going to do that all in 2021. This is over the next five years plus. Most of my strategic plans have a signature with a plus sign, because it may be year six or seven. But this is the intention, moving forward, and what we want to accomplish. And strategic plan should be part aspirational, that yes, eighty percent, we have to meet our obligations, but we have an aspirational element to this as well, to meet our envisioned future. So I want to address that, because I think it's a really important, yeah, we said this, but you will have to recheck, is this still a priority amongst all the other things that a board has to weigh in on over time?
This is Cindy. I like number three. However, when we do talk about the rebranding and we're thinking of new logos for all the vehicles and stuff, and me personally, I don't think it would be a proper time to be having that expense, but if it's something to eventually lead to, I think that's okay. But I just wouldn't want to have this number three say, okay, that's what we're going to do. And I think it doesn't say that. It is more of a goal down the road.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Director Davidson. I agree with Cindy on that point. We've, we've talked about the logo several times over the, over my tenure. It's an expensive process, and it's something that we would certainly want to have to have that probably budgeted. I, I think people underestimate the, the cost of new business cards, new, new vehicle signs, all that kind of stuff. It's certainly something we want to, we want to, we want to understand what the budget number is going to be before we go forward with something like that. It's certainly something we want to, we want to, we want to understand what the budget number is going to be before we go forward with something like that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? And even in private business, we look at those rebranding costs and just to let you know, while maybe not ideal, it's something that even if you did decide to rebrand, you could go, just as an example, with a new website, but you're not going to go to the entirety of the expense of re-putting, repainting all your vehicles, for example. That's something that you will consider anytime that this may come up into the future for budgeting reasons. So any comments again from the public or staff? Do the directors feel comfortable with this goal and the objectives as stated? That when we come back to the next board meeting, you would be able to vote on this item?
Yes. I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Yes, looks good.
I'd like to see the, the numbers on, on this potential of changing the logo on the, on the pickups. Damon told me a month and a half ago that, that they just bought $750 worth of signs. But if we are in fact going to try to claim that we're repositioning our strategy, repositioning our, our desire to be perceived as more friendly and proactive with customers, I, I think that spending a couple of thousand dollars on, on advertising the fact that this is, this is part of our commitment. This is, you know, we, we want to, this is the new CCWD. This is CCWD for the next, for, for new generations. I, I, I don't want to, to short, I don't know, short sell our effort here. It's, it's important to me that, that we make everything that we're doing here consistent and believable and tangible. So that's my two cents.
I appreciate that. I think that's a great point, just real quick. I, and I think there's a balance here where we can capture the, the, the change and the, the new. I, I agree, it is a different CCWD than it was even just a short time ago. And I, and I do think it's really important to find ways to effectively communicate that. But I also am sensitive to the, the cost constraint, so we're going to be, we're going to be budget conscious and, and this is, this would come back to the board. And, but I think there's a balance we can strike there where we're still effectively communicating that, that change and, and the, the direction that we're taking without, you know, without, without going farther than we need to as far as budget goes.
I, I volunteer to fund the purchase of signs for four vehicles myself. Jeff, you going to do four?
You're aware of the fact this meeting is being recorded?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it. Let's send them an invoice.
Well, thank you. I can tell that this is a, this is always, I like to say, it kind of reflects the ethos of any organization. And people wear their brand, we hope, as a badge of honor. And that hasn't always been the case that happens in private business, that happens in public. So I think it's great to keep it on here and as the board dialogues and continues to move the district forward, you guys can continue to have that, but it does seem important enough to capture what came back with the surveys and the interviews and show that there is some intention, long as it's in balance with all the other priorities. And again, we're probably not going to use numbers when we number these in the strategic, when we put these in the strategic plan. They just may be bullets underneath. So Maria, who is just a master at design, will look at the different methods of doing this, but you're probably not going to see numbers and letters either in terms of hierarchy. So thank you. Let's move on to the next goal.
We made it.
Okay, so this is going to be an extra long one and I'm going to go ahead and read this. Goal F, enduring organization. Ensure reliable and consistent services through building an evolving organization that reflects the district's values. Objective one, create efficiencies and long-term cost effectiveness through advanced technology and modernizing business practices. Two, protect our assets through upgrading cybersecurity and onsite security. Three, ensure proactive succession planning to leverage our sustaining staff, knowledge and onboard the next generation to inspire stability and innovation. Four, invest in employee engagement and wellness for recruitment and retention. Five, provide staff with training and professional development opportunities. Six, develop thought leadership in a knowledge sharing environment rooted in our mission and vision. Seven, enliven our core values and foster a trusting environment through the strategic plan as our guiding force for decision-making and reflecting our why we serve. Eight, evaluate the district's essential staffing and priorities and employ district staff, partnerships, vendors and consultants to align with strategic priorities and provide the most effective services. Nine, develop a district that our customers value and our board and staff are proud to serve through a recognizable and respected brand. Ten, value the workforce that enables us to deliver on the strategic plan goals and objectives and uphold the core values the district is committed to. Ten, did I say that right? Eleven, provide transparency by communicating frequently and broadly to unite our workforce and execute a living strategic plan through work that matters to our countywide interests. If you could scroll to the top. So this is an extra long one. I'm going to just take the first maybe six of these as we go through and would like to call on Director Rademan.
Well, first of all, I, I like the word enduring. I think we had, we were fighting with wrestling, I should have said better word, with what we were going to use for sustaining or sustainability or ongoing. And that, that enduring does good job. Thank you for, for coming up with something, whoever, whoever's in charge of, of that. That's the only thing I have right, I have right now. I'll reserve my future comments for, for future, for later. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for, for recognizing that Director Rademan would be probably considered, I don't know, over 100 different options for that particular word in this document. So I really appreciate you calling, because I like, I like where we ended up as well.
Thank you, Cindy.
Well, let's see. You know, at the moment, I think I'm okay, but kind of like with Scott, something else might come up from another board member or someone else. So I'm good for right now.
Okay, great. Director Underhill?
Yes. The thing that I find of real value is the succession planning because that's one of the things that I've talked about for years. The fact that, you know, we are going through retirement, we're going through people leaving CCWD, moving elsewhere, and our succession planning. Because, you know, the thought is somebody leaves and there goes all their experience, all their knowledge and what have you. But if we're identifying the fact that our organization is not going to stay the same, that is the important part that we really need. And so I, I'm really happy with that being addressed. Otherwise, it's fine.
Great, thank you. Director Thomas?
On the sentence number three, I, I'm just struggling with the appropriateness of that word onboard the next generation. Can, can we suggest a different way of, of saying that?
How about prepare?
Excuse me?
How about using the word prepare the next generation?
Or integrate?
I think integrate would show that we're being inclusive.
And that's good, better than onboard.
Okay, great. Any other comments, Director Thomas?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Cindy.
This is Cindy. I, I was looking at something and number nine, I really like that. And I'm wondering if that should be moved to the top. Develop a district that our customers value and our board and staff are proud to serve through a recognizable and respected brand or maybe service, but that to me is really important. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, let's move that up. And if there, Director Davidson, do you have any comments on the first seven?
It's, it's very thorough list.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead. Any comments from the public or staff on the first seven? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and I think we're at number eight, right, Maria?
I think we have to include seven because we moved one up.
Okay, seven, thank you. Develop thought leadership in a knowledge sharing environment rooted in our mission and vision. Eight, enliven our core values and foster a trusting environment through the strategic plan as our guiding force for decision-making and reflecting our why we serve. I'm not going to read these again since I read through them already. Are there any, are there any comments to seven through 11? Starting with Director Rademan.
Yeah, number, number seven, I'm, if there had been reference to that quote before somewhere, I, I can see using it here. Is it, is it referenced somewhere, somewhere else? It, it just comes out of the blue as, as some guiding force. Or not, not number seven, I guess it's number eight now. And then, no, I don't like that. It doesn't sound right.
Are you having an issue with why we serve or guiding force?
Both.
Both? No, I think we can change any of it here. So it might have come out of the surveys, et cetera, but it's not even highlighted, so we can change it.
I like what it says, I like what it, I like what it says, but it's like find a different way of saying it.
Sure. So values and fosters a trusting environment through the strategic plan as our roadmap?
As our guide?
As our guide.
For decision making?
As our guide in how we do every, our everyday activities or something like that, but why we serve.
As our directional guide?
Yeah, okay, I mean.
As our guide for decision-making period. Do we need to put why we serve?
No, we don't.
Our decision-making in, in, in every aspect of our operation or, I mean.
I mean, just recognizing that the strategic plan can maybe influence decision-making, but there's a lot more that goes into that, right?
Yeah. The trusting environment, the trusting environment and, and through our strategic plan, I think is, is great. And just finishing it up looks better already and it may, we may be able to get better than that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Director Sakata, any comments? Bertha?
No, I'm, I'm good with the rest of it.
Russ?
Just put a period at the end of the guide for decision-making. Drop that why we serve stuff. I think we already talked about that.
We added in every aspect of our operations. Are you good with that? It might not be on your copy in front of you. Okay.
I am.
Great.
Excuse me, on number 10, we have a dangling participle? No?
Oh, my God. Not the dreaded dangling participle.
That will be addressed.
That will be addressed.
Thank you for pointing it out.
Okay, Jeff, any comments?
Nope, I'm good.
Any comments from staff or the public? Wow, so I want to take some time just to reflect that I believe we got through all of the goals, did we not, Maria?
We did.
We didn't skip any. I want to take some time now just to go back to each of the directors for two things. I want to know if there's anything in the goals and objectives that would prevent you from moving forward with this document after we make the changes and we will point out the changes that we make in the next board package when we adopt the entire strategic plan. So I'd like you to make two comments. One, how has the strategic planning process been for you to date? And do you feel like you could move forward with committing to this strategic plan for the next five years? And you guessed it, Scott, I'm going to start with you. Scott, we can't hear you. I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Thank you. You're pretty consistent with calling on me first. I, I wish I was leader of District Five today. I, I'm going to say the same thing that I did the other, on our other two workshops that I'm, I didn't expect much coming in, coming into, into this. And, and I, I'm impressed at what we've developed and how much thought has gone, gone into it. I think this is a great, a great, has been a great process. And I think it was, I didn't know it was necessary or even that it was an option here. But I, I, looking at our, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing our new mission statement on the wall and hopefully we get the other two up, up there as well. I'm, that's my comments about what we've done here today. And, and then, yes, I can vote for, vote positively for what we've accomplished here and, and get this approved in our next meeting. Thank you for, to our consultants, Maria and Ellen, I think you've done a great, a great job.
Thank you for the feedback, Cindy.
Yes, it looks great, so I would vote to adopt it. I think it's all great. The process has been really good. I feel like I learned a lot about CCWD and staff and whatnot, and I really enjoyed that. And the only other comment I would make, would it be necessary to have staff bring back comments, say, three to six months from adoption, just to give the board an idea of how the draft or the objectives are working for them and their day-to-day operations to achieve the goals? You know, is there anything that could be updated? And I'd, I'd like to kind of know that if, if that's not too soon for them to give us an idea of how it's working for them to use these objectives.
Thank you. Cindy, I'm really glad you brought that up because it is something that we entrust that the general manager, Michael Minkler, will use the strategic plan in his conversations with you moving forward. And you would have updates with regularity on are there obstacles to executing on, on the strategic plan? Or is there ways to enhance things? So Michael, maybe I could let you speak to that.
I, I think it's a really good point. I'm glad you brought it up. And actually, Director Underhill and I were, were talking about something similar this week. And I, I would actually suggest maybe creating an objective along those lines under enduring organization that, that addresses developing and utilizing performance metrics for, you know, district, for district work efforts or district activities. Because I think that is something that we've tried to do more of, but I think we could also, we need to do better at it. And, and that includes, you know, a lot of different initiatives where, where we need to make sure that we're not just, especially as we're developing so many new programs or business processes and implementing new technology, making sure that we're, we're tracking the progress of those efforts and, and reporting back to the board is, is really important in a time of a lot of change. So, and, and I think that applies absolutely to this plan as well. So I'm really glad you raised that point, Director Sakata.
Well, I just want to make sure that we did make this plan and nobody could work it, you know what I mean? And so when you start doing that, if you report back and say, no, we need to adjust this value or whatever. So, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bertha.
Oh, yes. I'm just, I want to thank you, Ellen, and, you know, for your help. And Maria, we've completely gone through a whole new process throughout the strategic planning. I haven't done a strategic plan in, I don't know, Jeff, when was the last time we did it? Didn't follow.
Yeah, I don't know.
About 10 years ago. Yeah, it's great. And I think it was, the board worked very well together. And I'm pleased to hear all of the comments from everybody. Everybody had a part to play and they did that very well. And I'm very happy. And then, as Cindy was asking or suggesting that we do here about how our plan is working, did we take all this time to come up with something that we could work with, that we could see results? And so however you plan out how we're going to be getting the feedback is wonderful. But I think this was a very successful process. And I'm just very, as I say, I'm very, very pleased. And we'll work towards it, I will work personally towards its success. Thank you.
Thank you. So Russ, I know this was probably the best birthday present you got all day that we're going to end early, but we definitely want to hear your feedback.
Okay. I, I've been reflecting about this opportunity for, since we started. And, and when you're an elected official on a board like this, you kind of try to do your best to do your, your job in the, in the best way that you can, represent your constituents and, and have a positive influence. But this, this process really, to me, has represented my first opportunity to put my fingerprints on some positive things that I hoped to accomplish when I got elected, appointed first and then elected. But anyways, it's a, it's a good, good process. And, and I think that the value of it can be measured in, in large part by the participation of, of two executive directors of adjacent counties, water districts, participating this morning. They, they, they can see the value of it. So that, that makes me very happy. I'm sorry that John Woodling couldn't join us today. I always enjoy his participation, so tell him that we missed him. But anyway, I, I can enthusiastically vote to approve this when we meet again.
Thank you. And I know John was sorry he couldn't make it, but I'm sure he'll be there when we adopt the final plan. So thank you for your perspective. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I just kind of want to echo everybody else's comments. I think the, probably the most important aspect of this planning process for me was all the effort that our staff put into it. And that's, that's really important. I mean, you know, as a board, we can, we can only do so much. And it really, I really want to thank all, all the staff for all their hard work putting this plan together. And, and of course, I will support it.
Thank you. So before Michael concludes us, I just wanted on behalf of Maria and myself to thank you for entrusting us to this really important process. And you guys have all done a tremendous job. Staff, both staff that are present here as well as staff that participated in the survey, they're really going to be looking at this collective effort and say, was this worth our time? Was it worth our money? It's always the first thing on most of our minds when we're at a public level. And I'll be very excited to see you implement this plan. And if you don't implement the plan, I might come back as your angry public, not because I had a vested stake in your community, but rather because I really think that this plan is going to be important to modernizing your district. So I hope this is one tool for you to do that. And let Maria have a few words. And then I want to hand it back over to Michael because we will be coming back to you as the next step of improving upon what was written here and coming back to your next. I don't think it's the next board meeting, by the way, but it's in April that we'll come back with the finalized plan. So Maria?
Yeah, I, today is a really good, feel-good moment for me, seeing us complete this final workshop. All of the work that everyone put into these objectives, just the sheer number of them shows that there was a lot of input and a lot of interest. And I really look forward to showing you the final plan as it all comes together. And I really appreciate all of the support and participation.
And Maria didn't underscore it, but she grew up in your community, so this must be exciting.
It's really great to see.
Yeah, so, Michael, did you want to close this out here? And then we could take any questions from staff or the public after that.
Yeah, and I just really appreciate everyone's engagement again. Thank Larry and Ed for, for participating and making the time to be here today and make some, some really positive contributions. And, and really thank the board for the, the sincere engagement in this process. Because as, as President Davidson mentioned, you know, it's, the document's not worth much if we don't have staff buy-in and staff input. And the same goes if we don't have genuine input from the board and, and engagement and support for it. And, and it's just really heartening, I think, to see after a lot of work that's gone into it, to see, you know, buy-in from, from all, all sides is, is fantastic. So really appreciate everyone's engagement. I'm excited about the final document and then the, the new, the new direction that we're going in once we have that. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions or statements from staff or the public? Well, thank you, Director Davidson. I think we're concluding our final workshop on the strategic plan. Thank you again, and we will see you at a board meeting in April to present the final content of the document.
All right. Sounds good.
Do we need a motion to conclude the meeting?
Do we just need to, would you like me to adjourn the meeting?
To adjourn the meeting? I think, yeah, I think we're concluding the meeting a half an hour early, might I add. So that's to your efficient work.
All right, well, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, Jeff.
Bye.
All right, have a good day.
Happy birthday again, Russ.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.